We leave in order at 6:45. First thing I'd like to do is pass it to Nadine to introduce the candidate for Inter Director of Financial Services.
Absolutely. So, last week Laurie Martesca and Ruth Landon and I interviewed Praveen Singhal. He was our candidate that was recommended through Masbo. He has just finished his program and is just recently then officially licensed, became licensed as the Director of Finance and Business, so through the Department of Education. We were very impressed and wanted to bring Praveen forward to the full committee. And I know that Brad, you have a copy of the questions that we had asked Praveen and I had told Praveen that we would probably ask about four or five questions and if there's anything else that Praveen wanted to add afterwards, that we could do that. So, welcome.
Welcome. Would you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Praveen Singhal and basically I have a background in basically schools. I have worked for school departments in various positions for the last 10 years. Started as a teacher and then basically an assistant department head and then basically finally working towards a business office. So currently I'm an Assistant Business Manager at Learning Committee Charter School in Providence. So, and but I live in Massachusetts, so I wanted to look for a position in Massachusetts. So, licensed in Massachusetts as a school business manager. So, I wanted to continue that path of career progression.
Excellent. Glad to have you here tonight. And what attracted you to Berlin-Bowilston?
It's community. I live in a city now, so basically I'm looking for, as a family, we are looking for moving into suburban areas and if you look at Department of Ed's report card for Berlin-Bowilston, some of the sports are awesome. It's a very, it's a school district which does very well in terms of student achievement.
Excellent. In this role, you must interact with a variety of individuals on a daily basis. Can you talk to us about your social people management skills and how you provide communication to people?
I use a variety of communication methods. I'm equally comfortable with electronically, electronic communication as well as phone communication. I try to basically build credibility by having reliable information. I try not to have, you know, approximately this is how it is and then basically try to give you something else later on. I try to avoid those kind of communications, especially in a business office. When you're talking numbers, they have to be solid numbers.
Excellent. Yeah, you realize obviously this is a region. We've had that problem before. Berlin-Bowilston, Berlin-Bowilston region. Have you worked in regions before? What's your understanding of how regions work?
My internship was in a regional district. So basically, that was a cohort of four school districts. That was basically a technical high school where they used to have coordination and basically you will have assessments and you will have, you know, you need to go to different school committees for approvals.
Four, you should like two. Now, what are your experiences in developing a budget and how do you identify the need for line item transfers during the course of a fiscal year?
Basically, my expenses as a mentor, when I was an intern, I was doing my internship in my regional school district locally. So, I went through the whole process of how my business manager was doing that process. So, I was part of that, plus in my current job also, we develop our budget. We start typically, business office start working on it as the previous budget is getting approved for the next year. But in terms of organization, we start getting focused on it in October, October, November is a basically, is a very busy time for the budget. That's when you start planning for it and by January, you know by governor's numbers, you have some idea of where you're gonna be.
Do you do the line item transfers sort of as you go or do you do them as a batch twice a year?
As a batch. I prefer it as a batch and with a documentation so that, you know, especially those which are out of category. Like there are some categories within which you can transfer and there are categories which are, you know, you need to think about it, you need to document.
Great, that's good.
So, just to clarify, Praveen, on that particular question, some people understand that the, there's categories that you can move within the category and then there's line item transfers where you're actually moving from category to category.
Yes.
And I think the category to category is what you would do in a batch, correct? But your, your lines within that category, if you want to just explain what you, you talked to us about what you do, your Fridays.
Yeah, so basically, you want to minimize those transfers. For a variety of reasons, auditors don't prefer it and, you know, so basically you want to minimize that, you want to have documentation of whenever you're making category to category transfers. And so basically, that's the process that you want to follow. And you want to look at it, what's your auditors have said to you in the past regarding how it was handled. So, there's a lot more comes down to individualization, customization of a business office.
Excellent. Now, when you've been working before in business districts and stuff, have you come up with any good ideas, been able to implement them to save money?
Yes, in my current school district, money's always tight. And basically, one of the, one of the programs that I pushed for was basically that we are going to have a force PD days that we're gonna build on the days where teachers are giving assessments. So, teachers don't need to be there when they're giving assessments, especially in key subject areas like 10th grade math. So, basically, and once we have planned that assessment day and assessment material, teachers don't really need to be there. So, they can be taken off for a common planning time for preparing for the next unit, so for having just a, you know, having a student work, analyzing student work or any other PD needs. So, but those tests can be given by other teachers by combining classes in a cafeteria so that that savings can be, you know, or with the help of a substitute. So, that savings can be incurred, you can have much more of a common planning time. So, without entering any significant cost in it.
Sounds like a great idea. I like thinking out of the box. Do we have other questions from anybody else in the committee?
I loved how in your resume, you said you're efficiency and transparency fanatic. So, you've already kind of told us how, how you're transparent with some of the things you do, like your very documentation with the line items and be very clear. Can you explain any other ways that you try to be as transparent as possible?
I think the transparency, basically, you're always, you always want to be on the lookout for ideas, how to do things better. So, part of that process is you want to let public know, community know what your processes are so that if anything is there, somebody can point it out, hey, things can be done efficiently. So, one of the things that I, basically, I prefer to do it is warrants should be basically available to the person who's signing it, school committee member, treasurer beforehand. So, they should have access to it on a website, on a FTP website so that they can see what's coming, what's not coming. So, they are not being asked to sign warrants immediately, right, you know, right on the spot.
Like we just did.
Especially the line item transfers.
Yeah, so basically, they should be available on the website or through other electronic means ahead of the meeting, school committee meeting. So, that way you can have, you can take your own time, you know, you're not rushed, you have, you may have a suggestion or not, you know. So, that, those kind of little things that makes a difference.
Thank you.
Is there anything else we should know? Any other questions? Thank you for coming here today. Do you have any final comments?
I'm basically looking forward to understanding needs of the business office and doing my best to serve those needs. So, I'm excited to be here and looking forward to working in Berlin-Bowilston.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for coming. I think right now, you're gonna step out of the room and we're gonna take a vote, is that the plan? Or how does it go?
Yeah, we can do different things. So, it's open to the public. So, Praveen, you're really welcome to sit here and listen to the discussion and they can make their vote or you can leave. It's whatever you're comfortable with. So, that's up to you. It's all good. It's all good, so.
Whatever's you prefer or basically.
It's all public anyway, so you'll be able to see it. If you want to stay, you're welcome.
Well, I personally am very excited about being able to get the transfers early on the line items. It's something I've been asking for, for a long time from the current people we have. So, I think it's a great idea. Any comments from anybody else?
We grilled him rather thoroughly, Ruth and I and Nadine. And I have to say, this is just my own perspective, it, I felt that he interviewed as well as anyone I've ever interviewed in my entire career. I was extraordinarily impressed. And I was impressed both in terms of, we asked a lot of technical questions and there was a lot of detailed information that gave us evidence that he understands how school systems work. I was very impressed with the fact that he came through as a teacher. Some of his responses were about student learning, which is so gratifying to hear that from a finance or financial position. But also, in addition to sort of his technical expertise, there was, I think, an extraordinary level of what I would call emotional intelligence that was evidenced by, we presented some complex scenarios and asked some hard questions. How would you handle some of these scenarios? And his responses were thoughtful but direct and appropriate, I felt. I was extremely impressed in this interview, as you will gather from my comments.
Can I put you on the spot, though?
You may.
Concerns, weaknesses, what would you say?
You know, we talked a little bit about, because one of the things that I told Praveen is it's obvious he has a huge degree of self-awareness. You could tell from a lot of the things that he said. And so, I asked him, what are you working on personally? Like what do you think you need to work on? And the one thing came up in the, in sort of the context, and you jump in if I get this wrong, Praveen, kind of came in in the context of the nuances of interpersonal relationships. One of the things that he said that it kind of made me laugh is, he said, "I don't come to work and talk about dogs." And I don't think he meant that dogs are bad. I think what he's saying is, he's very focused and he's gonna be, I think, a clear communicator, but he's not the kind of personality that's going to form warm and fuzzy personal relationships with everyone he's working with. Is that a fair assessment or do you want?
No, I'm fine with it, but the fundamental, basically, obviously I have a skill level to communicate with a variety of personalities. But my fundamental personality that I, you know, is basically more of a work-oriented person.
Other what?
Work-oriented person.
Work-oriented person?
Yeah, so basically, like, I try to stay, basically focus on what needs to be done and there's always the stuff that needs to be done. Business offices typically are under pressure for a lot of things and you have to be 100% accurate 100% of the time. So, and that has become your second nature as you have worked in the business office. So, that's, that's basically has been my personality, that I'm focused on work and I'm not great at basically talking to somebody about some, like for something for half an hour. So, I'll give you an example, but you know, when I was a student, 15 years ago, I used to have a lab mate. We were just in a laboratory and there was one of my co, basically, co-student, she would drop the pen and it used to be half an hour story. And, you know, like who gave us the pen, you know, where it came from, why it's so important. So, I had a hard time. So, I tried to take, you know, avoid those conversations because there's nothing that's out.
You know, it's funny, years ago, we did these exercises in my organization around people's work styles and I remember us having a discussion about, I was talking with our lab manager, laboratory manager, very technical position. And I said to her, you know, but you and I never had that little conversation in the hallway about what's going on in your life and all that. And she's like, "Why would you even care? This is work." So, it was just, it's a different, a different style, a different hat, a different way of working and I'm not, I don't think it's bad at all. I think if you had to identify, you know, what attributes are gonna contribute to the success of this position, I don't think the ability to chit chat is a critical one in that assessment. I do think, I mean, Praveen did share some examples of complex situations where interpersonal skills were really important and I felt reassured that he definitely has those interpersonal skills.
I just want to make sure that basically it comes out right, you know, it's such a hard thing. Specifically, it's very important how other peoples are feeling, what experiencing in an office. You might have somebody stressed for some other reasons, for personal reasons or whatever. It's very, very important to understand those and recognize those and change your behavior because of what other person may be going through. So, and that's a different story if you're talking about half an hour chit chat for no reason. So, it's an ability to understand what's going on, it's very important what your, you know, coworkers are going through it, your team members are going through it, it's very important so that you can basically provide them a support. And it's only after a long period of time, you know, if everybody comes up with an issue every day, that's a separate story. But that support you need to provide them on a daily basis as much as possible. And I'm good at it. I'm good at it.
The other thing you talked about was when he maybe had a conflict with somebody and it was a heated conversation, that the next day it was done. You know, it hit an end. That was business for that day. Okay, now we need to work together again, which I felt really showed a lot of maturity in how you deal with interpersonal skills. And I would also add to what Laurie said about, not only did he bring in education, the question when we asked it was, what was your single most important? And that had to do with education, which I totally did not expect from somebody that does finances, which I found like really refreshing. I do think that one thing you did say, that when you were in a team for what he would want to work with, you remind me if I'm gonna say it correctly, when he's on a team to build that, to talk more at the beginning, to build a buy-in from the concept or from whatever was going on than to just assume that it was there and heard that and something. So, that would be something that he thought that he could work on better when he was in, working in a team.
I will say that in the interview, some of my concerns I had before we interviewed, I think, Praveen did a great job at relaxing me on some of those concerns. One being the fact that, you know, he has not been a business director prior. However, all the questions that we asked him, he hit them spot on as if he had had years of experience. I felt really comfortable with a lot of the answers because he also not only had 10 years of experience in throughout financial matters and auditing and so forth, but he also expressed a lot of his work ethic. And you know, that's really important to me. And I had asked him some questions about, you know, after hours or when, you know, what do you call after hours? And I felt that he and I were a good match in that way because he felt it's not an eight to four job, you work until that, that task is completed. He also, when we also asked about how you prioritize, and I just loved his response because it's exactly how I feel and it's been three quarters of my frustrations this year is do the homework when it's assigned, not when it's due. And I feel this year, a lot of it was due and that's when it was getting done and it was really frustrating. So, I feel that's a good, because as soon as I know something's gotta get done, I'm already on it and I'm already doing it and I feel that that would be a good piece. The other explanation, and I'll go back to the Fridays because it's what I do on Friday afternoons, is look at the budget, is what he says he does and, you know, he'd spend that whole weekend if he had to, to look at those budgets and see where the numbers are going and have that discussion with the superintendent Monday morning or Monday afternoon or the very first time we're in the office together, you know, he would make him a point. And I felt that communication piece has been really minimal at best, especially I'd say the last six or eight months has been really minimal. And so, that is something that I've actually missed as a superintendent and I look forward to having that is, you know, I used to meet almost every day with a business director and I feel that doesn't happen so regularly. And also Praveen's experience, I was also concerned with facilities, there's so much with facilities that are out there. And that's one of Praveen's strong suits as well, is knowing about the facilities, you're licensed.
I'm a licensed construction supervisor in Massachusetts.
Right, so that brings a whole other strength as well. And then when his answers were very much educationally oriented, that also gave me a nice sense of relaxation because I feel that decisions aren't gonna be made just about the dollar and I'm not gonna have to spend my time talking over and over and over to give an explanation of why those numbers are the way they are, what this curriculum means. So, as I've been trying to build an administrative team, I feel Praveen would be able to fit in and be an asset to that administrative team to add that financial aspect and understanding. But also, as we're doing our curriculum and instruction and assessment, he gets it.
One of the challenges we've had in Berlin over the last year was dealing with the town departments. Did you guys probe into that?
It was just more or less about communication and how you feel about that. And transparency is so important, you know, we have the FAC meetings and we bring Praveen with me at those FAC meetings and being a part of those discussions, it's hard, you know, it's been hard for me to go to all of those. And I know Angela, you've done a great job at going, but I really feel it's important that I'm there, but it's the same exact day as the Mars meetings. So, if I can't be there, at least if Praveen can be there and we communicate regularly, they'll see it's a unified face, unified.
Would you be comfortable with him going?
I would be comfortable, yes.
And representing and communicating?
Absolutely. I mean, clearly, we would go a couple of times together so he could get a feel of who everybody is. I'd bring him into the towns, the town offices to introduce him to everybody that he'd be in contact with. But I think it would be really, you know, he, you had ideas and I'm drawing a blank, but you had expressed some ways of even communicating some of your budget in the budget process, not just, you know, you talked about the website and you talked about different ways of having further communication with people. And I think that was a very important key for us because of the struggles we had this year. I know Ruth, you were, you were really kind of listening for those types of outreach answers as well. So, I was, I was very comfortable with your response.
The question you asked Brad too was a theme that we heard throughout his interview, which I thought you were asking a really good question about, you know, do you look for opportunities, savings opportunities and efficiencies and things like that? And I definitely got the impression from a lot of examples Praveen shared, that that's a passion for him. He wants to dig in and find opportunities to either make something better, do it differently or save costs. And that's, that was kind of even beyond my expectations, I think. So.
Okay, did I do okay on that one?
So, I guess is it time for me to ask for a motion to have the superintendent draw up a contract for Praveen?
Solved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So, what is that contract?
What is the contract? So, we would do, it's an interim position. So, it'd be a four, one-year interim position. And just so that the public understands this process as well, when you do an interim, you do not have to post, you do not have to do duplicate resumes and so forth. You can appoint through an interim. This appointment is coming from the recommendation of Masbo, Massachusetts Association of School Business Authority Organization. So, this contract will also include a mentor. He'll have a mentor for this year as well, since it's his first year. And by law, you really have to provide 50 hours of mentoring service. So, this would include a mentor and I believe that John Crafton has already even identified somebody who would be a mentor. Do you know who that is?
No, not at this point.
I believe, okay, so I can, I can tell you who that is because it's all identified through Masbo in regards to who they felt was a good partnership. So, we're going strictly by their advice, but it would be a one-year contract. The salary range that we are able to go forward with is between 95,000 to 100,000 for the contract for one year. And it would state in the contract that we would allow a consecutive contract should this position be managed for the districts. So, that's basically how it goes. And once you appoint somebody as an interim, again, if you want to do a consecutive contract, you do not have to post, you do not have to do that. That person can just fall into a permanent position.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Awesome. Welcome, welcome.
Forward to working with you.
So, Praveen, that would be effective, starting on August 1st is what we're hoping. You and I can talk tomorrow. Can I give you a call tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay. Is there any time in particular?
Can we do later in the day?
Later in the day?
Yes.
Sure.
It's 3 o'clock, okay?
3, sounds fine.
So, I guess next up, we have the approval payable and payable warrants in the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
There was.
Some were.
I don't have a motion for it.
Oh, yes, some were.
Is there a second?
I still can.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry. It was one of the minutes, I had made a correction to it and if the correction is not reflected in what we're looking at, it had to do with the process of checking references for Dupre Law.
Do you remember which, are we looking at 6:15, 6:45 or the executive decision?
Let me see if I can identify those.
It talks about it on 6:45. 6:45 meaning something down in.
Is it region or charge?
It's, it is the region. Business Item A. Is that where you're talking about?
The execution of agreement on Dupre Law offices?
It was actually a prior meeting with, and the minutes were brought before us once before. It's, but it was in our packet for this meeting.
So, tell me the topics again, Laurie, I'm sorry.
It was Dupre Law and it was the discussion of the fact that we had done some reference checking and it only referenced me doing that and I wanted the record to reflect that Tom Fleming also did reference checking.
Okay, so I think those were the, I don't even see an acknowledgement of that in this particular, so I must be missing something.
I thought that we made that correction.
At the previous.
I did vocalize it, but I saw that those minutes were in here again.
I don't have it in my packet.
Did you not, did she send those by accident? Because when those get changed, they get written in, it's signed, and then we get the written copy going record.
Okay, here it is. It is in the, it's in our packet.
Okay.
And it's the Wednesday, May 7th.
Okay, I don't know why it's in there. Those aren't the ones that should be, she gave you the wrong one in your packet.
Okay.
Because the only consent agendas are March 31st and then the three June 17th meetings. That May one, we had fixed at the June meeting.
Okay.
So, she just gave you old ones by accident.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sorry about that.
Any other corrections?
I just thought in the 6:15 minutes.
Yep.
Under Business Items C, I thought that where it says, Ms. Martesca motion to approve opening the position for Director of Finance with the start date of, that was supposed to be August 1.
That is supposed to be on this one.
Good catch. Any other corrections for anyone? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passage unanimously. And we're at the fun part, the workshop. So let's welcome Bill K. Presser.
Sorry, I was about 15 minutes behind. I just need, um, I could do whatever math I can stick it down to.
Brad, do I have any other warrants that were on your side?
Um.
When I signed them, I put them on my side.
Oh, yeah. You signed them already? Yeah.
And then there's one here that I think we've all signed.
Well, I was asked or told or advised, invited, and that you wanted to work tonight on goals and on some issues around community relations, parent relations, community communication and engagement and so forth. So try to drive the discussion a little bit and get you guys talking. I think that's sort of my purpose here tonight. So I started out, I, I made the assumption that when you wanted to talk about goals, you'd said you'd wanted to leave the overarching goals that you had in place. So what you're talking about in the goals is more your SMART goals for the coming year. And in terms of both for the superintendent and the committee, just the committee or?
Just the committee.
I think for the committee.
So have you set the superintendent goals yet?
She met her sheet with the different goals and she highlighted the ones we were supposed to do. I don't have that working.
Okay, well, Nadine can probably fill us in then. Because basically, I think when you're setting your committee goals, what you want to be able to do is look at your overarching goals and, actually, I put your overarching goals on the slide so we have them there to refer to if we want to refer back. And then when you're thinking, I just put a reminder of what SMART goals are. And then some of the questions to think about when you're looking at your SMART goals for the year. Are there any emerging issues that related to the overarching goals that you sort of want to tackle? Move yourself closer to the overarching goals? Are there any initiatives that are already in place that are sort of ready for now what's the next step? With those initiatives to move you forward, further, closer to your vision? What can the school committee do to work with the superintendent on ensuring that the district goals that she has set or the other goals that she has set come into place? You know, whether it be if you're looking at policy changes to think about, are there resource allocations to think about and other ways that you might support the superintendent in the realization of those goals? And to think about, if you, if you set these goals, how do you define excellence in reaching those goals? How, how are you able to define how, you know, the, whoops. It's a little quick. Sorry. Who's the secretary for the region this year?
It is Larry.
I started, so.
No, I'm just, I got signatures I need.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant the minutes for this. Because I started taking.
Awesome, glad you did. Thank you. So, and then, you know, think about, well, how do we know we've reached the goal and to the level that we wanted to reach the goal? It's essentially a question of how do you define excellence? So I thought what we might do, I know you guys love Post-Its. Is just start out with having you each spend a few minutes thinking about those questions and writing down some ideas and then we can sort of put them all together and discuss. If you don't mind, just those two.
So I guess it would be cheating to ask what other school committees have done.
Say that again?
I guess it would be cheating to ask what other school committees have done.
You know what? I have to say that you guys are doing a very good job of sticking to making sure that you're doing that continuing cycle. And I'm really just starting to work with a couple of other school committees. They're very much, the ones I've worked with are very much related. I mean, I don't think you can steal anybody else's goals. They're very much related to their vision statement, to their overarching goals, which are not your overarching goals.
I figured they might give us some guidance.
Yeah. You know, so, okay, so one committee that I've worked with started out saying, well, you know, we have a goal on student learning. We have a goal on community engagement. So what policies might we look at? What are the policies we might look at to be that, to say, to ensure that the policies that we have in place reflect what we want? So, you know, it might be taking a section of the policy manual, dealing with certain ones that may have come up and need revision based on that. Community engagement takes, you know, we'll get into that a little bit more. This particular committee had a great desire to be able to talk to their community more about the fiscal resources they felt they needed. So they started to plan what kind of conversations they wanted to have with the community and how they might lay the case for fiscal resources. So is that the type of what have other committees done?
Yeah. Always a big believer in not reinventing the wheel.
So when you're doing this though, is there a protocol? Obviously, you need your overarching goals for everything. But then as far as like timeline with the superintendent's goals and the school committee goals, is it like the egg or the chicken? Is it kind of like?
Well, I mean, to some extent. Nadine, where are you on your superintendent goals for the next cycle? Have you, have you tentatively set them? Have you set them or are you still waiting to talk to your team?
So, yeah. So what I did was I gave, based on my evaluation that the school committee did, where they found my strengths and weaknesses, and also doing a full reflection of the year, where the strengths and weaknesses were. I then gave a summary to the school committee regarding, based on that information, and looking at all of the plans where we need to go of some different criteria areas that I felt was important for me in preparing my goals for the upcoming year. So I haven't finalized them, but I gave them to the school committee a direction of where I was going. And then we'll have our administrative retreat is July 30th, 31st, and August 1st. And so with our administrative team, they've also already received that as well, as have the teachers. So they all see like kind of where we're heading. And then we're going to work on our strategic plan during the retreat. We have like one half, almost the whole day, probably two-thirds of the day, that we're actually working on helping our strategic plan, all nine of us.
So. So Ruth, in answer to your question, it is a little bit of a chicken and an egg sometime.
Okay.
If you've had those basic discussions and people have sort of an agreement on where things need to head, then I think you can start, at least now, to draft them. You know, it may take in some time into August before you feel like Nadine's been able to have that meeting and come back to you and for you to finalize them. One other group I worked with had, you know, some goals where they felt like it was really only a six-month goal. Because they wouldn't know what the next step was until they got to the first part. So then they said, well, you know, we need to do part one. We can define it, we can make it SMART. But after that, we're going to have to revisit it to figure out what the next step is. So the discussions sort of have to take, take place all at once around each other?
I have to say, I do feel that this year already, we're in such a different direction than we were last year. So each year, it kind of feels like a first. And I think not just for me, but for everybody because, you know, my first year here, there was nothing. Right? And then last year, I had developed something and then they developed goals. We kind of tweaked a little bit in the fall, but they said that now the overarching goals are already there. We've already had a full year of those goals. We now have plans in place. So we all have things and guidelines to look at now. So I feel like it's yet again the first, you know, the chicken or the egg, whichever you go. I think it's, it's getting more clear. I think it's kind of a three-year, five-year transition to get there. I feel like we're getting there.
Yeah.
Like I just pulled up what Nadine sent us for our June 24th meeting. And she had taken her superintendent's rubric and highlighted all the indicators that she wanted to work on this year, right? Based on the evaluation and how the past year. So.
So have you, have you also talked about student learning goal and district goals?
We're working on that when we look at our strategic plan as well. We're also, again, another first is we're also going to be doing the PARC this year. So what does that mean? But we have one year under our belt with the benchmark assessments of the MAP and the AIMS Web. So we'll be doing our second year data collection this year. Our big thing is data. That's a huge piece for us this year is understanding data and putting data teams in place. And our administrative teams have already, we've already had one half-day of training on data. And one entire day of our administrative retreat, half of it's going to be a training on data follow-up. And then we'll be doing an actual comprehensive data plan in the afternoon. Because we have a data plan, but it's really what you need. It's just not there. There's nothing solid enough.
So I'm not sure exactly when you came in the room and what I was introducing. So one of the things that I talked about was having the school committee set goals that enable them to support the district, particularly the district goals and the student achievement goal, being able to happen. So from that standpoint, do you have any thoughts about the work that the school committee needs to do within their purview that would help? Where you think you're headed in terms of data or professional development or student achievement?
Worth having an awesome school committee. I think really just on their, being on their end, is just the continuous support that they can provide in our curriculum, you know, helping to support us through the budget. They support the need that we have for our curriculum, the assessment tools and looking at that. So maybe even something that they could do is when we give presentations, you know, three times a year, we give presentations on our data. We have the principals give that information, just to kind of see the purpose of why we're doing it or having a rationale why we're doing it. You had talked about doing some dashboards on the website. I think a school committee could kind of figure out a focal point, maybe based on the goals or whatever, a way of doing some, some of those dashboards. And what do they look like? What school committees are doing dashboards and what do they look like? I think that there, it's tricky because it's within their purview. Yet I also like to give them as much information as they can, but sometimes it goes beyond their purview. But I can, they do it very respectfully and I appreciate that. But you know, then sometimes is that final line.
So it's sometimes the school committee being able to identify, have a discussion with you and identify what data do we really want to see? So that you're not, and you and your administrators aren't chasing to give a lot of data that may or may not be useful to the school committee. So, you know, time can be used more efficiently.
The other, the other piece, Dorothy, I think is important too, is with the budget process itself, is to have the school committee can actually, I mean, I'm putting together a task force. So any kind of information or insight or participation that the school committee can have during the task force. We have one member from, we've got Tom and Brad, are going to be budget task force representatives. And we put it out there to our select boards and our finance committee to have periodical meetings. So any way that the school committee members can help support that task force.
That would be, that would be easy to identify and measure and.
You know, I'd like to put together like a three, a three-year projection or the budget projection over the course of three years. So they could help me in identifying trends that could help support some of that budget. Some of those things would be very helpful.
Do people have things written down? Should we get out a sheet of paper and write down some ideas?
I think this is a question for clarification purposes. I think I was coming into this thinking we were not really focusing on the overarching goals or on the superintendent's goals, that we were feeling the need to, we have not developed a regional, specific school committee goal or goals. Burlington has developed, I think, two or three goals. And so at the last workshop in March, we had a discussion about kind of wanting to further that conversation.
So I, you know, I guess that's what I.
I think if you're hearing where the needs are and how it can be helpful, this is going to help you develop those goals.
Right.
Like the brainstorming activity.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Because I think, I, I think I have the same sense you do.
Okay.
That, you know, in, in talking about what the needs are and how, what is the school committee's role in supporting those needs? And then out of that comes the goals of your work for the year and supporting those needs. Does that make sense? Lori, does that make sense?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Can you ask another question?
Yeah, I guess maybe we should do it and see if. Are other people clear? Do you feel like?
Well, Tom, you had some things written down. You wanted to start out with talking about what you had.
Sure. One item I have written down is regionalization, right? We've engaged a study. It can go a lot of different directions. I think it's going to be a lot of work for us to further this, whatever this is. We don't know what that is, but I think there's activities that we need to carve out time and focus on.
That would definitely, and that because you, school committee, are the bridge of the community and also the ones that would be sort of crafting some of the details that if it goes forward, that would definitely be work that falls within the purview of the school committee. As, there's no one else really that can do it. You want to keep going?
On student, student achievement and its measurements, metrics and dashboard, kind of those last that are just flavors of the same. But we started a number of different new testing tools this past year in which we've established some starting points or benchmarks. And now it's time, I think, to really take that, further that to the next step of where we need to be going with it.
So in terms of being able to monitor the progress?
Yes.
What does it mean? What's being effective?
Right. We've tackled a little bit over the last year, you know, what is kind of, what would a dashboard look like? We've had some discussions. We've seen some early results from the first year of testing here. So I think now it's time to mature it, right? We've just started here. Now it's time to take it to the next level of maturity, starting establishing where we want to go with our, our tool, say our dashboard tool, establishing probably some goals here of where we want it to get the, you know, the numbers to, say.
So sort of that question of what data does the school committee want to see?
Right. I think this is to answer that question.
And part of, you know, the dashboard would be, how is it going to be presented?
Yep.
And then, you know, probably the school committee's not the one in, you know, on its own that sets what are the benchmarks we want to reach, but in consultation with.
Correct.
With, okay. Lori, go ahead.
Just building on that, at a prior meeting, we actually had taken quite a bit of time to develop, sort of to brainstorm a list of potential topics or metrics that are kind of interrelated that we might want to look at during the course of the year. And I'll give you some examples. It's from the minutes on September 4th. Is, we talked about looking at college acceptances to see if there was any impact of changing the policy around eliminating class ranking. We talked about the impact on performance of classroom size, including information on school choice impact on class size, student growth percentiles for MCAS or PARC, survey and exit interview summaries for those who need. survey and exit interview summaries for those leading the district, baseline measures for aims web and MEA, behavior management reporting, team presentations from literacy data, their teams that are working, common themes, I don't know what this means, common themes from eighth graders in March.
Well, that means when she talks to the eighth graders, when there's some sort of feedback from the eighth graders that we'd want to... Who do I?
Community feedback, teacher feedback, and then technology, how it's being used, what difference it's making, how have tech support staff been used, and also reporting that info back out to the community. So that they can see the investment the school system's making in its technology plan, but see it in terms of impact, not just the dollars being...
So it looks like some of these are metrics and some of these are sort of presentations that you want to make so that the community has an awareness of what's going on in the schools. Does that sound...
Yep.
Other potential goal topics?
I think we've already brought the topic around budget and the budget process.
So you mean, I don't want to put words in there, but sort of to mean advocating for the budget?
No, not so much that, but the entire, the process for developing, communicating, gaining buy-in for the budget.
And like just the adjustments?
Yeah.
You know, adjustments come along, then communicating those adjustments, why?
So after the budget's been...
Well, we have to do it in the last...
It's the development, it's an internal cycle. It's a five cycle of development.
From the initial presentation of we need 50% increase down to, you know, getting down to a level we're going to give.
Three, two, one.
At our meeting in March, we actually bundled three things under something we called increasing effectiveness of governance. And one was the feasibility study for regionalization. A second was to establish a budget subcommittee or task force. And the third was to continue exploring methods of collaboration, intermunicipal agreements and other structures to achieve alignment and efficiencies. I don't know if you still feel like that all makes sense, sort of bundled or...
Yeah, I think the regionalization side, I would pull out because it's big. And that's kind of why I have that as a first one there.
What was the last one again?
Intermunicipal agreements and other...
That would be under, I call that a regionalization as well because we're going to get this presentation of, from this feasibility study of whether it's recommended to us or not. And if it's not recommended to us, then we have to look at other things like intermunicipal agreements and things like that. So I think that efficiency part is all part of regionalization.
Right, because those are the different flavors that could ultimately tie together.
So regionalization is one method of collaboration and efficiency. But another method, if regionalization is not possible, are these...
Would be an intermunicipal agreement.
Is it?
Right.
So then it gets back to budget process really kind of stands on its own, so.
Right, because when you're doing one budget for regionalization, that process is much different than what you're doing now.
True.
Much different.
Also on the topic of regionalization, part of that is communication. It's not really the act of regionalization because we aren't at that point. But I think our biggest hurdle is going to be the communication and the clarity of the information that we need to present, depending on which direction we go.
That's a great point.
And I think on that route, when you start to see, I know in even structural experiences, when something as big as regionalization or change, it's as big as that, when it's communication, everybody wants to have the answer and everybody's going to want to answer those questions right there in the parking lot or on the field. And that communication, you'll have to decide as a committee, how are you going to handle that? Because if Angela says something from Berlin and says something one way, and Lori from Boylston saying something totally different, you're not showing you're going to fight front either. So you'll have to have those discussions of, how are you, you know, are you going to drive everything to one person? To two people, you know? How are you going to do that? Because six different ways of communicating the same message is going to be heard so differently.
I'm wondering if an option, because I'm also cognizant of the worst thing we could do is shut down conversations. I mean, you can't say, "I'm not allowed to speak about this." You have to direct your question to Ruth or to Brad. But I'm wondering if we as a group could come up with sort of a...
FAQ.
Exactly, exactly.
That you all know the talking points, yeah.
Kind of contributes to developing, developing the talking points and everybody's on the same page. But any one of us could, following those talking points, could have a conversation.
It's a great strategy on how you're going to handle that type of communication, for sure.
So I just brought this back because it seems to me that regionalization really touches all of your overarching goals. I mean, you can certainly make a case that, for how each one of those overarching mission statements would be affected by regionalization. So it sounds to me from this discussion that one of your SMART goals for the year would be to understand, to reach some conclusion or some outcome of the discussion on regionalization. And you might not know exactly what the key actions are until you hear your report and the recommendation. But after that, then you'll know whether, which direction you're headed in. Are you headed to regionalization? Are you headed more to pursuing intermunicipal arrangements? And depending on which the answer is, then there's FAQs, there's what's the process next? How do you engage the community? What are all the things that might come up that might not necessarily be covered in the report that the community might want to know about or have concerns about? So I would say that one goal would certainly be around that issue.
And your FAQs, your engagement steps, those are all your action steps to your goal.
Develop this, FAQs, FAQs. What are, you know, what are you going to do to, for community forums, community input, so forth and so on. The other part of my presentation is to talk about different methods of engaging the community. So we can get to that later. But that certainly sounds like one goal. And it sounds like you, whether you stated it as a goal or not, it sounds like you already sort of have a goal going around the budget process with the task force.
Well, it's one of Nadine's goals, right?
Right, and since school committee is...
So, you know, so then the question is, what is the school committee's role in supporting that goal? Then from that follows your goal. Essentially, your goal is stating your role in supporting the process and then figuring out what you need to do to be able to do that. I don't know if I said that very well.
But does it go the other way though? Because the budget's ours, right? It's the school committee's. And it's what is then the superintendent's goal doing to support our goal?
Well, you know, I think it's almost one of those chicken and egg. Because the budget is yours, but where do your budget priorities come from?
Right, exactly.
They come mostly from recommendations or information from the administration, which tells you what is needed to increase student achievement, right? So that's, so it is sort of a chicken and an egg. Now, Nadine may have way too many priorities and then it becomes the job of the school committee to have the discussion about, you know, what are the top priorities? What do we want to achieve in this budget? Or, you know, what of Nadine's three years of priorities rise to the top in year one, year two, year three? So I think it is a process that, where you need to support each other.
And I'm looking at the handout that I gave the school committee. It's standard two indicator, E, it's fiscal systems. Where it talks about developing a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, goals, and allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school level goals and available resources. But more specifically is the element one, which is develops a budget that aligns to the district's vision, mission and goals, and allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district's school level goals and available resources. So that's more specific.
I think part of what the school committee's conversation has been around is the process of budgeting and our role in that process and the order of things. There were a number of things this year that I think we all felt didn't go exactly how we might have liked. And some of it had to do with resources that were supporting the budget process were not as strong as we would like. I could see this year's process already being very different based on having an internal resource who can be very helpful, I think. But I think also we're looking for a process that achieves some community engagement and communication goals too.
For the budget.
Right, for the budget specifically. You know, how do we involve the public in the budget in meaningful ways and appropriate ways? And early enough in the process that you're not just presenting a final budget and people get to ask questions, but rather they have an opportunity to provide input.
In my head, I'm thinking of, how do you make this a SMART goal? So I'm thinking of what we've done and what we need to do to do all that. And so we here at the school committee for the task force, we've appointed our two people to be on the task force. But do we have our people yet from FinCom? And Nadine would ideally like some person, one person from FinCom from each town, one person from Selectment from each town. I don't know yet if we have those people, so that would be part of the goal to at least have one of those people.
So I sent out a letter to everybody, to everyone. And I know that some of them aren't meeting right now regularly. And so I'm assuming that once August starts or at the very beginning of September, we'll get more. But I do know the only ones that we heard of is from the Berlin Finance Committee. So I think we'll have a representative. They just haven't identified who that is yet because they haven't met. But everybody is interested in that. So I haven't heard any more. I did ask Cheryl last week, and she and I have been kind of like two cells in the night. But I did ask her last week to follow up on the letter to see if anybody has responded.
So just, the task force is not internal just to the schools. It's bringing in like town officials from both communities to have sort of ongoing education about budget development?
Yep, and I'd like to do, I did this, Dorothy, out at Gilmanagu, and it worked out really well. Because at Gilmanagu, they typically had budgets that didn't pass and you've had to, you ended up getting the commission's budget. And so we developed this, it was a task force, where we had a representative from each group. And we met in the superintendent's office every six weeks or so. Most of the time, it was just listening to everybody throwing everything on the table. You didn't always have an answer. You didn't always walk out of there with a firm plan. But what we did end up doing in the process was develop a three-year projection just to look at the sustainability over time of the budget and what was going to happen with the towns and where that impact was going to be. So that really, that helped because, I mean, we wanted to get the budgets passed the very first time and it was a whole new trend, let's say, for Gilmanagu. But it just, it worked out really well because it opened the doors for communication. And you did hear the frustrations from each town. And not every conversation was sweetened with roses. I mean, it was really difficult, two towns to get a conversations, but they were in a safe place to have those conversations. And you have to see respectfully where each town is coming from.
And you have the opportunity to explain where the schools are coming from.
Exactly.
And how, and at the same time, you're understanding the issues that the town...
The town has...
They are able to understand the issues that the schools have.
So we can just respectfully see that we're all in the same boat. We're all having these difficulties or whatever. And, you know, and then you, behind, you know, in those conversations you start to have with the task force when, okay, you know what, in regards to our three-year planning purpose, process, I see where the town may need this and they're really struggling. So, yeah, we need this as a school, but we will hold that and we'll bring that next year's table. So we have a three-year plan. So no matter where, who's in office or where they are, there's that drafted plan that they see, yes, but this is where we were planning for the following year to help each other out.
And then, so one of the actions of the task force would be to keep the rest of the school committee informed of the conversations that are going on in the task force.
Don't hear what, you know, some of the updates of what the conversations were at the task force. But by having a task force, it doesn't have to be posted. It's not a little meeting. It's just one representative from each, so you don't have a quorum or anything. And it's just to have, it's just an advisory, like, not an advisory, I don't want to put it that way because it's not... It's just a task force, putting their problems on the table and brainstorming to bring back to their groups.
So in terms of a goal, even a budget calendar that you know when presentations are going to be made and so forth would be a helpful part of the goal? Because it sounds like that might have been part of the, a little bit of a trip up last year.
I think, I think part of our goal I would like to see too is that we have these budget discussions and presentations three times a year and like a one call before the December. Berlin is doing its presentation on the budget this time, this date. Kind of a way of step by step, everyone's informed. And I, I think we post the meetings and people have to find where the posted meetings are. But instead of them having to search it out, it would be nice, I think, for, to be able to send it out to everyone. Like, here's the first budget presentation. So then people, so that the community is feeling like they're part of each part of this process. For the last couple of years, they've felt like...
It's been going on.
They have an input. And another thing too, I'd like to see is we tweaked our calendar for this coming year and have the final, the budget hearing one week before the school committee takes their vote. Kind of just as, from feedback from the community members that we received that we have this budget hearing and then you turn around and vote, by the way, when are we supposed to say something? Well, ideally, they should say something in December, after February or whatever. But still, it, I feel like it gives us a chance to...
And the thing is, and I think Dr. DePaul had said this a couple of times as well, and I know, because I talked a lot with him through the process of this. You know, a budget hearing is just to hear the budget. It's not to really make changes. It's really to hear the budget. At that point, the budget's pretty much there. So really, that's why your December and February meetings are more important in essence to hear feedback than your March budget hearing. Because budget hearing is after all that conversation's happened.
Right, and I think in the past, our communities have kind of been like, oh, it's the budget here. Now it's time to go listen. Where really, we want to send the message, no, it's time to go listen to December and February, for sure.
You know what's hard about this is that the budget, developing the budget is a process. And the budget you present in January doesn't really resemble the final budget. That's the only downside of lots of transparency is when you have a lot of different versions and things do really radically change. It's hard for everybody to keep up with that or to be okay with that. I'm not saying that means don't do it. I'm just...
Like the adding to the list of logs and sausage things you don't really want to see yet.
You know, there are different theories on the budget process and I'm sure you've seen it as well, Dorothy, is that, you know, some superintendent... seen it as well, Dorothy, is that, you know, some superintendents are going to give that high number, and you're going to just stick with it. And any numbers that change throughout the year, that would bring it down and down and down, they're not going to say anything or they're not going to make those changes because they're going to go with that initial, this is what we have to give in December, and that's what we're sticking with. Because then they'll make the adjustments so that in the following year's budget, they'll just offset any additional monies that they got, they'll just offset it in the following budget. But what's happened here historically, and I've just followed that pattern, is as you get closer, you reduce, right, to the more realistic of what you have, and you reduce. But some superintendents don't do it that way. And that's why you get some towns that don't vote to approve the budget.
Well, that's what I was just going to say. Could you imagine our finance committees and our, even the town meeting, approving a budget that was that higher number?
No.
I can't either.
So why do we even start that high? And that's what we need to develop, our approach for this.
Right. Now, sometimes the logic for starting high is to be able to highlight the needs that you have, knowing that you're not going to be able to get all the needs met. But you want to sort of put the community on notice, hey, we have these needs. We have class sizes that are too big. We have a need for a curriculum director. We have a need to, you know, update five of our textbook series, or, you know, whatever it is. So that, and then through the discussions of the budget, you just, you sort of what the most pressing needs are, rise to the top, and the least pressing needs. I mean, I, I know some communities where, you know, a position was in the budget for a lot of years, and then finally, it was there enough that people understood, yes, you really need that, so it happened, you know, finally it gets in. So there's, I mean, Nadine's right, there's lots of different approaches.
And I think how you communicate it, how you do that, all goes into, I think what we're trying to get at here.
But I think also a discussion without any numbers, to start a budget discussion about, you know, what are the priorities within the district? What are the needs? What are the resources we need to be able to deliver the education we want? And then a discussion amongst the committee about what are the priorities in the budget is a place to start. We, in my own community, we've started making our budget presentation, we don't talk about any number, and we sort of, at the end, sort of sneak it in. But the whole bunch of discussions is just about what the priorities are to be able to deliver the education we want. And then, you know, sometimes it's a small enough list that is what we get. Sometimes as the process goes through, there's discussions about amongst the priorities we listed, what's at the top, balance with what the town is clearly able to give. You have, you have three town, two town meetings to deal with to get through budgets passed, right? So I'm sure, like any other town, the objective is when you get to town meeting, you're able to have three committees, the finance committee, the school committee, and Selectmen on the same page, to sell it to the town meeting. So that's a, that's a lot of discussion between December and when town meeting happens in spring.
I will say, I'm looking forward to the task force this year. I think it'll be huge. The important piece will be able to get everybody to get, stay involved or get involved from all, and it's, I think will be huge.
But, you know, going back to your work, there's a lot of different approaches. Maybe you need to have a discussion and agreement on what's, what do you feel is the right approach?
I think, too, you start high at the beginning, because like you said, it's, you know, I want, we need this or we need that. And so you're putting the ideal, if you have the ideal classrooms, this is the ideal staffing, this is the ideal. And then you also have to go with numbers of what you have now this year. Because you don't know what's going to change from year to year. So you have to do worst-case scenario, because we haven't even gotten, we don't get anything until January.
Well, and I think the other thing that I've seen happen in budget discussions, where there is like a task force and that collegiality, is sort of, it might be to help an understanding of, this department really needs this this year. But it might also be someone else being able to say, here's, you know, I look at the town budget this way, I look at the school budget this way, if you looked at your budget this way, maybe there's an efficiency you can find to help you accomplish what you want.
Yeah, I think the part of this needs to, we need to develop an approach, because I think I have a different perspective on an approach. I don't like wish list budgeting, right? You got to go into it with a realistic expectation of what the community is willing to fund, and then start with that, instead of, you know, trying to throw up an ideal case for...
Well, and, but sometimes there's a happy medium in there of pushing for...
My concern is, what we experienced this past year with the wish list approach, is you set unrealistic expectations. And if you're not very vigilant about how you communicate, people go off with a different perception very easily. And you get caught at the end with different expectations or different perceptions. So I think, and we should put everything on the table and talk about what we think is the right approach for this. Communication, I think, is key to any, to any approach, so people understand what you're going after.
And I have to say, I really appreciate that, you know, everybody's input on it. But I also appreciate, like, with Brad and this year with Tom as well, is really getting involved with sitting with me and spending the time to go over the budgets and understand. I mean, you know, I think it's very helpful, especially when going into the town. And I'm not saying everybody has to know or be exceptional with everything about the budget, clearly, but, but to at least have one person from Berlin or Boylston, and one person from Boylston, to be able to throw ideas off of it with me. And Brad, you've done that both years with me, and Tom did that with me this year, you know, after the, after the first two presentations, before I did the budget one, and so, the budget hearing one. It was just really helpful, because I got to see a different perspective of school committee's eyes. Not necessarily publicly like this, but just, you know, in the office, and let's strategize this, or let's talk about this, or looking at different things. And I'd even said to Brad that someday when he's not on the school committee anymore, I still need him to come into the office. Because it's very helpful with throwing ideas out.
To be an ad hoc budget person. I do, and I think Dorothy read my mind a few minutes ago when we started talking about the task force. I love the idea. I think it's going to help a lot. I think, you know, meeting priming and hearing some of his thoughts and his skill set, I think is going to help our budget process a lot. The one cautionary note is that I think all of us feel like we need to be kept informed because people ask us questions, and this year felt awful to me. Because I felt like, and I may, maybe I'm the only one because I'm new, but I felt like heading into that day when we were doing the budget presentation, I did not have the background and information about what those numbers were going to be and what the implications were at that meeting, and it felt bad. So I just want to be sure that we're not just, you know, that we have that involvement at that higher level in the budget task force, but that somewhere in this timeline, if it's possible, to alert the school committee as a whole where we're going and what those numbers are looking like before we're at the budget hearing stage.
Yep. So at the budget hearing stage, you're talking about March?
Right. I mean, we heard, we got a presentation in January of the preliminary budget. But when it came down to the final budget, FinCom was in the room, it was a lot of, they were just...
The timing of the meeting also, a contributing factor to this, was we literally got numbers like the days before from the state. So we're literally making changes at like 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon of the meeting. You know, ripping apart presentations and fixing them. That happens occasionally. But this year did feel like it was happening a lot, and unnecessarily a lot. So I am looking forward to having somebody full-time to work with.
Yes.
We hit somebody part-time, and it just, part-time just didn't work. My days in the office are days that they don't come, and you try to ask them if they could come another day the following week, because, nope, can't, that's not my day. You know, it just, it got very much like that. You need to be with me, you need to be there that day. Well, doesn't work that way.
The other part of the conversation around, Tom, your perspective, starting budgeting real, more realistic or closer to the norm, or closer to the real number or whatever, it's also, I think that's hard to do when the expectation of others who are influencing our numbers are that what we're giving them is this starting point, and they now can say, well, you've got to cut this, you've got to cut and cut and cut. That's the danger or the risk of starting with the, what you're referring to as sort of the realistic budget, and I think even the initial budget is realistic, but is that there is a perception that that's this high starting point, and there's going to be a lot of cutting that's going to happen to that? Because that is traditionally what's happened.
Well, those are, you know, those are complex discussions to have, but necessary.
And I think those will come out in the task force. Because I think our FinCom is very much in agreement with Tom's rationale, very much not wanting a more justified but realistic...
Well, and I'm sure you, and I'm sure you do this, and you can probably do it much more this year than in the past, now that you've established those overarching goals, to be able to show that everything in your budget ties back to a goal that you have to move the district forward. So it's not, you know, someone might look at it and it seems like a random ask, but you have the ability to justify it with, you know, your vision that you have, which as representatives of the community becomes the community's vision for the schools.
Yeah, the tricky part is, I'd love to try to give people information ahead of time, but it's also been my training and what we've been informed is that we don't get things out to people until school committee sees it. So like the presentation oftentimes, we'll put it out on the website after the school committee meeting, and put that, give that out to people beforehand, because it's disrespect to the school committee. Because they could be asked questions, and they might not have seen it themselves yet, or things like that. And it hasn't officially been public, because it hasn't been presented. So what we've done is, after the presentations, they've gone onto the website like the next day. They're out there first thing in the morning, we have them here, you know, copies, hard copies for people. So we've done things like that. But I think one, one thing I did do this year was I did send out to everybody the weekend before the budget hearing, I sent out line item budget to everybody. So everybody got to see that beforehand. And I think that made a huge difference, because when they did come into the budget hearing, it's against my practice and against what I was told, but just the way things were starting to go, I'm like, you know, I'm going to send this out to everybody. So when there's a budget hearing and there's a question, they can just come right out and ask it, and we'll have the answer, and everybody will have had a chance to see the line item. So that I did do. But the typical presentation is you try to keep that for school committee first.
So I feel a little bit like we're beating the budget to death.
It was our hot topic.
It was so much fun. Enjoying this so much.
So do you feel like through this discussion, you could sort of begin to draft, you know, a SMART goal statement and begin to come up with some key actions and benchmarks around a budget process, a budget calendar? Would be one of the sort of your, a little bit of your projects for the year, your goals for the year?
So we're, we're going to be able to break that goal now?
Break that goal now?
I would like to, is that right?
Take a stab at it, sure.
Can we go back to the SMART goal screen?
I'll tell you what.
Oh, thank you.
Put that right up.
That's good.
Thank you. And I'll get another sheet of paper.
I think that's a great idea, especially as you move forward. You could also move backwards, back a couple of years. And look not only at the amount of dollars we've asked from the towns, but what the actual budget spending was, and then combine that with the number of kids, and just sort of have a baseline of where we've been. Because, you know, I think we ended up spending about $200,000, $300,000 more a year, every year, because we had more tax revenue. It should be pretty linear, but it would be neat to see, and it's all public record, to go back like four years on the budget to see the, you know what I mean, Tom?
Yeah.
I think that would be an excellent way to start the conversation with your task.
You know what you might do, you might not be able to do it now, but you might, I find sometimes what happens with budgets is you have this budget presentation at the beginning, which is the budget you're not going to get, and you have what you asked for. And then you get to the end, and you think you'll never forget what you actually got. You know, how many teachers, or what positions, or what changes were made. So then when you're trying to think back of, I'm telling this in too long a story, but so that not only do you know what you got as an increase, but what you were able to accomplish, what changes were made as a result of the budget you got. Be able to keep track of that as well, sort of have your budget person, you know, once the budget's finally passed, say, this is what's in the budget. This is what's in the budget that's different than the prior year. And then you sort of have that ready, too, to be able to build on.
Go forward.
That's a really interesting point, Brad, is, and that makes sense to me, that on average, we're going to have $200,000 to work with, right? That's what it was this year. And then, like you said, if you go back three or four years, you're saying it's going to be something in that range, $200,000, $300,000. To get back to your point, it does kind of make sense that we're realistic about that.
Right, we don't ask for 600 if we know that we're only going to get 300. We should prioritize that 600, you know, but really only be asking for like the stuff. Because otherwise, I think we could risk losing credibility and trust, which in a small community is critical, in my opinion.
Well, that's what I'm hearing, I think, from what you guys are saying, is that it was a trust issue.
Yeah, it is.
For FinCom and others.
Okay. You're always the good ones that crack the statement. What's the statement? So what's your end goal? Your end goal is a budget that meets town needs, or meets community needs, and meets the schools' needs, or meets the schools' needs within what the town is able to give.
I don't like that, but okay.
So advocate for a budget, receive a budget, or we'll put, pass a budget, even though you're not passing it. We'll work on it.
You know, I think if you look back at what was achieved the previous year with the budget, with the previous year with the budget, with the previous year with the budget, what was achieved, and you show that you're always achieving something, I think you get a lot more money. Just thinking out loud, like technology-wise, you know, we have all these computers. People will read it more like a story than just a number, I guess.
Well, even if you go back and say, this is what we got, and this is how it was used, this is how it helped us.
Yes.
Is that our goal, though? I mean, that's always our goal to a certain extent.
I would say...
The process that we're, we're trying to...
Right, but I think you can do that by saying, approve an educationally sound budget that meets the needs of the schools. But you think, you know, that's, that's a part of it, but how are you going to do that? By providing ongoing communication with the community, like, you know, you want to, that's part of your process, right?
It is, yep, that is, yep. I like where you're going with it.
By providing ongoing communication with the community. Something about having a comprehensive understanding from all stakeholders. I don't know, I don't, I don't, you know what I'm saying? I'm trying to get
It's kind of a partnership with your stakeholders.
Right.
It's kind of what you're trying to get at.
Or
Driving towards a
By providing, by providing, or by developing ongoing communication, by, I don't know. Developing collegiate communication?
With, how about just with ongoing communication?
Yeah, with ongoing communication. Of course, then you have with the community.
Oh, yeah.
By to provide. And then I would, I would also say that instead of just approve, you want to have timing, right? So by the first week of April two thousand fifteen,
Excellent.
The school committee will approve, these are times. By April two thousand fifteen, the school committee will approve an educationally sound budget that meets school needs within the resources of the town. By providing, I would, I would even get rid of are able to provide, within the resources of the town, by providing ongoing communication with the community. I don't know, I'm just brainstorming with you guys.
That was good.
Yeah.
So it's, it's timed. It's action-oriented, it's measurable.
Realistic.
Yeah. Action-oriented. I don't think you need to add anything more beyond that.
No, or, or the only thing you can say is that by providing ongoing communication with the community as measured through the following action steps. And that's how you're measuring it, is through your action steps.
I, I want to make one tweak suggestion, which is that meeting needs is not, it, it sounds like status quo, and I'm wondering if, if we said something instead like that advances our goals or that, um, so approve of an educationally sound budget that advances district goals within the resources of, or something.
Yeah, like that word.
Yeah, I did, do you know where I'm going with that?
Yeah, that's great.
Because a school district's budget should be a reflection of the educational
Educational goals, so yeah, use that, educational goals. That advances the educational goals. That are within the resources of the town.
I don't think it, I think I can just say that advances educational goals.
Within the resources.
And is within, or is within?
Right.
And is?
And, and is within the resources of the town.
Town is plural, right?
Yeah, towns, and you have to have of after the word resources.
Doesn't it have to say available resources or?
Yeah, the available resources of the town, within the available resources of the town. Providing ongoing communication with the community as measured through the following action steps.
And then a lot of the action steps are the things, let's see, what are some of the things, task force?
Um, budget process calendar, which I developed last year, so you can just tweak that.
It's about community engagement.
Yeah, you have to just, yeah, somehow decide what you were, almost what you, you almost have like a community information or a community engagement calendar as well.
Can I suggest one more tweak up above, which is just, now it sounds duplicative to say, to me, to say approve an educationally sound budget that advances the educational goals. I'm almost thinking.
Get rid of it, the first educational?
Yeah.
Just the sound budget?
Sure.
Yeah.
And is approve enough, where's the development of that budget?
That'll be done through your, through the action steps.
Yeah, the action.
Okay. Your final goal is to approve it.
Okay, got it.
So what else, what else do you need to do? What are all the different things we were just talking about?
Priorities addition? Yeah, I would say assess the administrative priorities.
Can I, um, can I suggest assess administrative priorities, um, sort of vis a vis school overarching goals? That would be maybe.
According to
Or The overarching goal.
Or in accordance with.
Well, I think for the, for the key actions and benchmarks, it, you know, I think also Not quite as. Say it again.
I would say overarching goals and district plans. Because we have all these different plans now that we're following. The big piece there, Dorothy, is it, it, part of that is really communication, right? So what action steps there are they doing, how are they going to, how are they, how are they assisting and communicating? Like I know my step was, one of the things that was just brought out is to do like a one call or like, I wouldn't do a phone call one call because people panic, so I've actually stopped those, um, except I do do like a one call email, right? So I would do that, but that would be my action step in the budget process. So what is theirs on that piece?
Okay, so just, um, can I jump ahead a little bit to the community engagement things and maybe that will help you guys think a little bit about it? So if you think about public participation, the first thing you have to think about is what's your objective in community, in engaging the public? Are you trying to inform? Are you trying to consult, involve or collaborate? So a lot of what you, the vast majority of what you're doing probably with your budget is informing, but there'll also be times when you want to obtain some feedback. So if you think about, um, those two things, you know, I think involve and collaborate are probably more things, maybe a little bit, but their regionalization, I think you're definitely going to want to get more into the involve and collaborate arenas. But you certainly, in, in about the budget, you certainly want to inform. So you want to, you promise to the public is that you'll keep them informed about the budget and the tools that you use will be things where you are beyond your meetings, where you may be going to PTO meetings to, you know, talk to parents about what's in the budget, where you may, um, have other venues where you go, you know,
Coffee chats.
Coffee chats.
Superintendent coffee chats, superintendent coffee chats.
Right, but that's you again.
Right, but they, they could be a part of it.
They could attend and be a part of it. So what are the venues, what are the, um, tools and what are the venues that you have within the community to get the word out about the budget? Without sort of the outreach as opposed to the come watch the meeting, come go to the website, more the, the push instead of the pull in. So I don't know if that helps think a little bit about what, what can the school committee do to get the word out about the budget?
And can you have different, like, I would say early on in the process, we would want it to be probably more consultative, but as we get later in the process, it's more about informing.
Yeah.
Right? So there's going to be a time where we're going to, I want to get them engaged, get their feedback. We incorporate that and then it's about informing them of where we're going with it. Can you, we can do that
Oh, yeah. It's not all one, and one topic may not be all one purpose. There may be at different points in a, in the budget, in regionalization and whatever it is, um, you may be back and forth across the spectrum.
I could see sort of having a facilitated conversation with the public around priorities. You know, what's important to you as the community or parents or, I mean, it could be a wide open public forum, what's important to you about the schools in your community that helps inform priorities around budget and?
Yeah, usually in the fall, my coffee chats in the fall, that's when I try to get information on people, you know, first off, how's it going, where are the struggles at? I mean, I knew like in December, my coffee chats in December about the first grade in Boylston, real issues were, and that's why in January we were able to do some work, you know, to help prepare that. We had conversations with some of those parents, but I think, yeah, if we, if I did a, um, I'm thinking of course how I can be a part of that, but if in my superintendent coffee chats I had an actual purpose with, you know, prior to budgetary planning, like you to join us and hear priorities and I might be able to even do like a little survey. When I do the one call email and I have a link to Survey Monkey, some kinds of questions or open-ended questions, maybe school committee could help provide me in some kind of questions they'd like me to ask. That could be, you know,
What's the typical audience for coffee chats?
Say that again.
What's the audience for them, like, who's going to them?
It's a real variety, um, I, that's why I try to do, like, I'll do a morning, I'll do an afternoon and I do an evening and you get different groups depending on what time of the day, uh, you do them. Like the one to hunt up here at night is, uh, that's what I do at the very end of the year, um, thinking I might want to do one of those even more at the beginning of the year, the evening to hunt up a coffee chat because that's the heart, that was a huge, huge group.
Okay.
So are you asking, is it
I'm asking, because I want to make sure it's the right venue to get the right stakeholders.
It's parents.
If it's just parents, that's, that's one part of our stakeholders, but it isn't all the stakeholders. So we want to make sure we're doing other things that are going to reach the rest of the community.
And some of the things I do too is I'll go twice a year, at least, I'll go to the, like in Berlin, they have the coffees on Wednesday morning, nine o'clock, they have, right in Berlin, and I get to go in there and I'll, I'll meet with the elderly and I meet with them and have some discussions. And then there's like the knitting group, so I go in there in the knitting group and I just have a discussion with them. And then in Boylston, we've got the Boylston Men's Breakfast and I try to go to as many of those as possible and I hear all kinds of things about the community and where their concerns are with education that I wouldn't hear from parents. So I'm hearing that again from the elderly group, so I'm, I'm trying to hit
So just to sort of bring it, so it's not all one thing to
Yeah, right.
Disinformation, um, you know, whether occasionally a school committee member accompanies her or goes in place of her, you know, I don't know also
Whatever, yeah.
I don't know if there's also venues like, you know, if there's a Rotary Club that meets occasionally.
Yeah, great, there may just need to be other venues to hit other stakeholder groups.
And, you know, it's just sort of trying to identify those stakeholder groups and figure out how to be able to engage them. It doesn't have to be every time they meet, you know, but it, you know, when is the key time to go and either convey information about information?
This feels like a conversation we had a couple of years ago too, but it, when it comes to communication and responding to issues and being out there and being visible in the community, I think Nadine is exceptional and does an exceptional job at that. I think on some level, the school committee struggles with it because we don't have that same, I, I think people perceive that it's Nadine who's out there and doing all of that. We don't really have a mechanism and I think we're very sensitive or conscious of being very careful and it's, I, I don't think it's helped us in terms of towns feeling like we're representing their interests well sometimes because they don't hear us speaking about issues. They hear us being sometimes very silent or even absent in some cases. So I think it's, I mean, I would never want to trade you being the kind of person that you are and being such a great communicator, but I think the school committee, this is, we've struggled with this for a year now, we really do need to figure out what is, what's our voice, where is our voice, where is it appropriate to be and how do we have that relationship with the community as well?
Well, and that, you know, that, so if you're identifying with the relationship with the community, I, I, you know, I guess I go back to, so what is your objective of building this relationship? Is it to gain information? Is it to convey information? Is it both?
It's both, and it's to build trust.
Which I think also builds in the purpose of collaborate. You know, try to be more collaborative.
So I think, you know, my guess is doing the task force with participation of the school committees at one level starts to build that. And if there's other venues where you want to engage, not necessarily just the municipal government side, but the greater community, then, you know, very simply figure out the dip your toe in the water type things, that events where, I mean, I talked about outreach, but it may be something where you have just a, um, something where you do invite people into the schools and just to be able to have some conversation or, you know, have a, a topic oriented discussion, not a free-for-all, but, you know, whether it's the budget, whether it's, whatever it is. My guess is if you're really going to be talking about collaboration or regionalization, that, you know, having some information forms and a chance for not, you know, a presentation conveying information, but then getting feedback about what the community concerns are, where the school committee is represented and is not just Nadine there. That will probably be out in front of the community.
I think when you
Think of what you wish for.
Yeah, I think, Dorothy, the other thing, like, I'm just trying to envision, like, just only been in here for two years, but I'm starting the third year process and I'm thinking of, you know, if we put it out there that there was going to be an open forum discussion of budget planning, you're going to get parents again. They're the ones that typically end up coming, so, which is great. We love having the parents because they're seeing it firsthand. How do you get beyond that so that people actually even understand it? You know, I even try to have conversation on a personal level, I try to have conversation with like my mom and dad, you know, who were very involved when we were in school at a young age, you know, and the schools and so forth, and then now that they don't have children, they just go and do the vote at the town meeting without any of that input. And I think that's a typical pattern of what you see, so how do you get?
Well, I think some of what you do by having a school committee member along, where you're hitting some of those groups that are not necessarily made up of parents, but now, now you're bringing the school committee into that, I think that's one way to do it.
You go.
But, I mean, it's, it's a tough one. There's no, gosh, if we, if there were some pat answer, then it would be happening a lot more in a lot of different communities because you're by no means unique in kind of having those trouble.
It seems like
How do we engage the, the non-parents?
These days, people are used to going to events or places, you know, whether it's Easter brunch or the Lions Club, and those are great places to talk to people, but it also seems like people are wanting to get information on demand these days. You know, they use their little phone or computer, they expect to press a button and read an article or press a button and see a YouTube video. So I don't know if there's ways we can engage, but I know you guys did a job on the new report cards, that was a video, and I think that was a good way to get our message out in the community. It may take a little more work to try to make a video because people don't like to read, but. but if you do a video on whatever you're trying to get out at, you know, we might have a better shot at getting out in the community.
And, you know, that, that's a great idea, in it, but again, that doesn't, you're not getting the feedback through that. It may be a great way to start.
Yeah.
I think that's an idea.
Great event, you give me a event you don't give.
All of the administration this year, and they're getting a training that every one of them is gonna be required to do a blog this year. We're doing, we're all doing blogs, like, maybe the school committee can do a school committee blog. Or, you know, I don't know, but it was, it's, I got 900 hits in a matter of no time on, on those, you know...
I was just like, give me one feedback, just go to Facebook.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
The Boyleston Neighbor Group, the Berlin Neighbor Group.
Oh yeah, I was just gonna bring that. It's the online forums, and occasionally, school issues or school topics come up, and, um, you know, those are, those are tricky.
Those are tricky partly because of the open meeting law.
Right, right.
Because you guys could inadvertently, you know, if you were responding to those blogs, you could inadvertently be starting a deliberation that will be outside of the open meeting.
But like, some of those, I don't know how it wasn't, but in the Berlin Neighbors Connect, um, group, there's a whole range of people, that is a plethora of sampling of different demographic in our small town, it's not just parents, so that, that is one way to reach.
That's one way that you guys could reach out or something. Well, even not necessarily reaching out, but just something, reading it gives you some information.
Right, right.
But then you don't know how, and you don't know how, you don't know how to travel. Well, unless you do a survey and you feel like you have a good amount of feedback, or unless it's something that is percolating over time, and you're getting sort of repeated comments, it's hard to know the extent to which one opinion that you hear is held by the majority of the community.
What, what you do see occasionally is, and this is what disturbs me about, um, the sort of, the difficulty in responding, what's disturbing about that is that somebody posts something, and it could be completely wrong, filled with misinformation, and suddenly you have, and this is no exaggeration, we had one issue, there were 80 comments posted to that, everybody building off of the same wrong information, and that's hard, and that's a disservice to the school department and the district. If nobody sees it and is able to somehow interject something in there. But we're all nervous about doing that, and you, you also are nervous about being a spokesman without consulting with the rest of the community.
Right, right. You know, it's, it's funny, because the social media, I mean, when you are a superintendent or you're a school committee member, you're putting yourself out there in the public, you're putting your, your target in all different directions, and they are gonna say the inappropriate things, or state legislature, they are gonna just throw information out there that's not accurate, and it's hard to find your tongue to wanna give it the right spin on it, and it's so hard not to do it. What I get upset about with social media, which you can't do anything about, is when my teachers are targeted, because that's not what they signed up for. And I've had, I had about three or four teachers last year that came up to me so upset with all the things that they saw that were stated about them on social media, and I was like, what am I gonna do about it for them? Um, and so I had to educate the teachers about these kind of things, and you gotta let it roll over your shoulder.
Your public figure.
Your public figure, right, and you gotta let it go, but it's really hurtful, and it's, it's hard. It's where I think a lot of people, that it's where you determine who has the tough shell and who doesn't. And it's, there's so much out there that's not always accurate, and not always... Just, I'm just even reading this tonight about the MCAS in the park, and some of the information that's in there is just totally inaccurate information, but it's reported, you know, don't believe everything you read, right? I mean, that's unfortunate, and the unfortunate part is everybody's being subjected to it.
I have to say that in my community, I was very happy when Patch left the community, because that was, that was, it was a lot of the comments on Patch that started with that. So anyways, the path to...
The one comment that I would just add is, I mean, we're sort of venting about the frustration, but if you look to the business community and to others who are very active on social media, the best practice is that you do respond, that you don't ignore it, because it's viral. And at least interjecting that one fact or piece of information that maybe people are missing. And Larry did it once last year on Facebook, and I personally thought that was really smart and really helpful, and he wasn't expressing any opinions, he was just stating a couple of facts that were really skewed in this whole series of quotes. Um, so I do think it's something we have to think about, is, you know, what's, what's effective, what's the best practice, and how can you manage it so that it's not... I mean, it's gonna be what it is, but you can influence it a little bit by interest, by being there, being aware that's what's being said. It also, sometimes I think influences decisions that we might make. If we know that a ton of parents are upset about, I don't know, there was a lot of posts last year about a day that was selected as a professional development day or something. One of the things that happened on Facebook is that this really helpful person piped up and said, "Well, you know what? We could offer babysitting." So that parents that are having this difficulty with this day that got added at the last minute, we could support them and help them with this. I mean, it was kind of a cool, organic thing that resulted from that.
But what was funny is that out of all of the complaining and this happening, I think they ended up like four or five chats. Out of all, you know what I'm saying? So it's just, that's part of social media.
Well, but sometimes it's just, you know, responding to the, what the perceived need, that you responded to it somehow. That, you know, again, this is not anything that someone else has the magic answer to, because it's something that I hear all the time, you know, how do you respond to that? Often, um, anonymous, you know, not, not only misinformation, but anonymous misinformation.
I think you're always gonna be learning through this social media, you're always gonna be learning. So I think the important piece, you know, is to always have the open communication among one another of how to handle, how to handle each situation as it comes, because it can get frustrating. Um, and every one of us could feel, be self-included, alone at that point, and I think it's important to keep the communications open. To say, you know, this is what I saw, or this is what I heard, or what, what's behind this, so that there's no actual automatic assumptions.
And not to put you on the spot, but you can always respond if it's appropriate without concern about open meeting all the issues, because you're not a member of the committee.
Yeah, I don't tend to respond to those things. I read them, but I don't respond to them.
You know, sometimes it's better off just not reading them.
I'm not able to...
And that's right.
We've been listening. Um, so, um, it's about 10 of 9, and you've got one smart goal down. Do you wanna...
We really cranked, didn't we?
Well, yeah, you guys always have great discussions, whether you, you know, crank through without a good discussion, but a good discussion has an awful lot of value. Oh, we're just putting down a goal without the discussion. Um, you wanna tackle a goal statement on regionalization, or whatever you wanna call it, because you're not sure it's regionalization yet.
I think on regionalization, the flavor needs to be about the results of the regionalization study. Not that we're saying we're doing regionalization, because we don't know what this study's gonna say yet, but it's about the follow-up activity that we do with regard to that study.
So if, um, if the purpose of the study, I know you may be putting, because I haven't been taught this, but if the purpose of the study was to figure out ways to gain efficiencies of resources to further student achievement?
No. It's, it's a good question, it's something we should make sure we properly, fully understand before we write the goal, but it was more to, um, to relook at the topic of regionalization and to make an unbiased assessment of the, what regionalization would do and how it would impact our current educational system. And to assess what the pros and cons are of regionalization. It's not to say that, there's no decision going into this of whether regionalization is the right thing for our communities.
So let me take a step back, why did you, why did you even start to look at it?
I do think you were partly untargeted, because what I was listening to Tom writing, "Conduct a meaningful assessment of regionalization." It could be regionalization or other options for collaboration, resource sharing, and efficiencies? Or something like that, was it?
We asked them to really look at the pros and cons of regionalization.
But we are, we were looking for, how will this make our school system more efficient? How will it make it better? Will it help student achievement? And will it be cost-effective?
Yeah, I don't think we were looking at it just for its own sake. It was because we thought collaboration and resource sharing would be better for students, better for the district.
So if you wanna, if you wanna, if you wanna look at it that way, it's really a resource goal, right? What, and if you wanna say, uh, if regionalization is not the direction, then you would further look at intermunicipal agreements? Those are really all things around resources to be able to...
I think that's one dimension of it, resources. It's a...
Well, I think it hits all of it.
It does hit all of it, it does. The other part is to nurture that culture of respect, because if you're gonna go forward with regionalization, that's gonna be key as well.
And even if you don't go forward with regionalization, you're still, if you're looking at intermunicipal agreements?
Because I think there's a lot of different directions this can go, right? The first direction from the study could be yes or no on pursuing regionalization. And if it is yes to pursue it, then we may pursue it, but we may, our towns may say no, right? They may say, "No, don't do it." But even with them saying no not to do it, there may be other directions we may wanna go with the learnings that come out of this study.
So that's why, what, the way I had it worded is, "Conduct meaningful assessment of regionalization or other options for collaboration, resource sharing, and efficiencies."
Because what I'd like to add to that is, you said to regionalization, you're making the assumption that we're gonna go that direction. I would say to the regionalization study.
I'm saying, "Conduct meaningful assessment of regionalization or other options for..." So do you know?
Yeah, I guess I was thinking it was, we would do those things based on the results of the regionalization study. We've already taken the first step to do the analysis.
You know what, we could take the word "regionalization" even out of it, and just say, "Conduct meaningful assessment of options for collaboration, resource sharing, and efficiencies." It just so happens our first option that we're exploring seriously...
Is the needs assessment?
Is the needs assessment for regionalization.
I guess I think our goal this year is to do something with this study. We're gonna have this study presented to us in a couple of months, and our goal needs to be, now what do we do with this? It's the action steps we take on that.
There's also the physical agent path. I was talking with Steve Hemm a couple of weeks ago, and that's setting up the legislature. And something like that could also be another path, so maybe taking that regionalization word out and just looking at all of our options. You know what I mean?
So, Tom, your concern is that conducting meaningful assessment is just, you feel that's not the...
Well, I guess I just, I'm trying to say, say what it is, right? Being straight with it, we've engaged, and we're funding a regionalization study. Now we gotta do something with that, and I think our communities are looking at us to do something with that.
Use the results of the regionalization study to...
Right, I had, "By the fall of 2014..."
Yes.
"...to obtain an unbiased assessment of regionalization, to gain efficiencies by integrating all aspects of the Berlin-Boylston public school system, and to determine the appropriate path..."
But, see, I'm looking at the level of, I see that as the, the goal underneath this overarching kind of goal of exploring ways to collaborate, share resources, and achieve efficiencies. I'm, I was seeing that as the goal, and then under that, you know, undertaking the study for regionalization...
I can see where both, all of you guys are coming from. I can see both sides of this, all sides of it actually, because even you, Brad, had a little bit of a different twist than what Lori had. But I think you're gonna do all of those determinations based upon what you hear in August. That's gonna be your foundation block.
I think what's going on is you're starting the goal actually further back in time than it act, it's already progressed through some time. So your goal statement...
It's more, more overarching than...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that it's starting further back. I think it's trying to encompass things beyond regionalization, you know what I mean? It's trying...
But I think that study that you have is gonna determine which path you're gonna go.
Right, I'm thinking of it as what we're gonna do over the next year.
So that's why I wonder if, starting with the phrase, "Use the regionalization study to..."
I like that approach.
To determine the appropriate, because, uh, rather than our path, right? To determine the appropriate path by which to, to gain Lori's part of resources, efficiencies, and student achievement. They're able to incorporate all three of you guys.
That's collaboration.
Here it is.
To determine the appropriate path for collaboration, resource sharing, and efficiencies.
Determine the appropriate...
Use the regionalization study to determine the appropriate path for collaboration, resource sharing, and efficiencies. Is that...
Use this region...
Or to achieve collaboration, resource sharing.
To develop, to ga, I like your, your term list to gain originally. To gain, to gain efficiencies, collaborative resources, and student achievement.
I'm glad you got student achievement in there, I was thinking somehow, the end is, the end is, use your resources to improve student achievement.
Right. So, timeline though, is by the fall of 2014, they will use...
Well, you won't, that begins, that begins a new process. The fall of 2014 begins a new process.
That's okay, by the fall 2014, they're gonna use this blah 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 study to determine the appropriate path.
Yeah, I like the way, the order you've put it in, because collaborative resources bothered me that it was only financial side of it, and not the...
Maybe you can't read my 9:30, my 8:30 writing, but it's collaboration, comma, resources, so that's different than collaborative resources.
No, I was saying, I like that.
Oh, okay.
I like what, because you did it that way.
Yeah, collaboration, resources, and efficiencies.
Efficiencies and student achievement.
No, with the objective of advancing student achievement.
Or in order to, or to?
Right, in order to. And again, you can just put as measure through the following action. Lori, you're ready.
Now...
I am, sort of.
Well, you can, if you can read these, you can certainly... They'll stay here.
So I guess my only comment with that is, the action step there is to determine. Are we going to do more than just determine in the next year?
Well, wouldn't you determine it next year for it to be implemented the following year? And your following year would be more about the implementation process?
You might have recommended to...
Because I didn't know if in this next 12-month cycle, we're going to do more than just figure out which path to go down.
Usually you take the year of planning. It'd be a planning year.
Aren't we really going to be going, say, if this study comes back and says, you know, the path forward should be regionalization, aren't we actually going to pursue that with town meetings and going after our towns?
Right, right. But you also have to do your planning on your regionalization needs to be rewarded.
So you would consider that all in the determine?
That's all the planning piece because FY15 is already in process.
How about to plan the program?
I just want to make sure this is the right one because I think it's not just to say, okay, we're going to do it or not do it. It's about also getting the, determining how, right?
You want it to somehow get to the action for the how.
Isn't there some of that? I'm just thinking over the next 12 months, there's some...
Well, you could make that a two-year goal instead of a one-year goal. Because it is a two-year process.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, it's not all done within a year. I wish, at least.
But I think by saying by the fall of 2014 is too limiting for that reason.
Yeah, it needs to be a little longer term than that. That's more...
So you can just say there then, throughout FY14, '15 school year, the school committee will use this to... Right? So instead of by the fall 2014, you would say throughout or during the 2014, '15 school year, the committee will use this regionalization study to...
So can you name the actions before you have the regionalization step? Want the actions that you take be determined by the outcome of the study?
Right.
I think he's just saying, to say something like, to determine the appropriate path, but it's determine and act on.
Yeah, I think determine the path is an action step. It's a step that we're going to take.
But that's not the only thing we're going to do. We're not going to just determine. We're going to actually start implementing. Return the plan and then begin implementing the plan.
Yeah. And maybe that's what it needs to be, those kind of two-step.
So determine the path, right?
Another step is you're going to review the needs assessment in August.
What if we said...
Another action step is to review the needs assessment in August.
Is that part of the study?
Yeah, that's what that is. That's what the regional study is.
So with determining the path is an action step, use the regionalization study to...
I don't think that was the wrong thing to say.
I could write it again, I just...
I think we were thinking it means maybe determine and implement the appropriate path.
How about to determine and begin implementing? Because you're not fully...
You're not going to finish it in the next 12 months.
How about to determine and initiate the appropriate path?
Oh, that's good.
Nice job, yes.
I provided one helpful word. My life is complete.
Right, as an endorsement. And I think those action steps, you're right, Dorothy, would be after the next school committee meeting is when they'd be able to do more solid action steps.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Budget and regionalization is two big pieces for the region. This is huge.
So I guess I would also say there may be other smaller things that come up and may not rise to huge, big smart goals around, you know, there's, well, I guess a lot of what, a lot of what might come up around goals for district improvement or student achievement, most likely often are resource issues. But if there's, you know, I remember being here once last year when you guys decided to add the professional development days. That was something that needed to happen to advance student achievement that clearly fell within your purview because it was a calendar issue. So it's anything that's like calendar policy, you know, things that are within your purview that need to happen to advance student achievement would be something you might want to look at after your next school committee meeting or after the point where Nadine reports out on the administrative retreat outcomes. That make sense?
But I think what's great is that those goals, even though we started off talking about, you know, my goals really, and what does that have to do? This is all completely school committee purview. You know what I mean? Like, at the end of the day, this was just perfect, I think, the way that those two goals came out of. And even though the budget is their purview, it's also my purview. So that's one that we definitely would work a lot on together on that process. And we're out in the community and I'm going to meet, I'll invite the school committee, or the school committee's going to go somewhere, I go there. So that's more of a, we talk about team, not just school committee team, but school committee and superintendent relationship building team. That's one of those goals.
Well, and actually, I mean, the same with regionalization. A lot of the logistics may fall within you and your administration of how is this all going to work? But certainly the community engagement piece of it and a lot of the how did the regional agreement work would fall within the purview of the school committee. So neither of them are in isolation, but can't be. I mean, you're part of this governance team that's got to run the place. Not much happens in isolation. So you feel like you accomplished what you want?
I guess for me, I would kind of look at the regionalization. I don't see, like, the budget, I see how I'm going to set up a goal for myself that's budget-related. But I don't see myself setting a goal for anything about regionalization, right?
Oh, I'm not, no, I'm not saying that you do. But I'm saying that as the school committee carries out the goal, there will be support that you will need to provide.
Right, right, okay. I just want to make sure that...
Yeah.
Because that would not be my purview.
So if you, I did have one other thing that I thought might be helpful. Oh, one of the things that often comes up in community engagement, this came up in your operating protocols, in anyone's, not just yours, about where does the issue belong? And I thought, you know, I ran across this in something I was reading about on community engagement. And I thought it might be just a helpful way to think about, you know, what pocket does it fall in? If you think about, is it an owner concern that someone is bringing to you that has to do with policy or your values and missions and goals? Or does it have to do with sort of day-to-day operations? So is it an owner concern or sort of a customer concern? And those customer concerns, which you will often hear about, are things that really are best addressed by professional educators. But when it's an owner concern, that really becomes an issue for the school committee to be addressing. So I just thought I'd stick that in and see how that resonates with you.
It's a good distinction, actually.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was when I saw it. And then the other thing that, I don't know if we really want to take time to do this tonight, but, staying down. I'll just leave this with you if you want to just be able to think a little bit about this, is if you take, you know, I can forward the PowerPoint so that you guys can have it. But if you think about that chart about what's your purpose in engaging the community? And if you just want to think about who your stakeholders are, what your objective is in engaging that group of stakeholders, and then think about what tools you might have available, just a sort of a brainstorming thing to do sometime. It might help you think about ways to engage the community and manner that you'd like.
I would love a copy of the presentation. It would help me minutes a lot.
I will forward it to maybe...
Thank you.
She's taking a picture. I think she is.
Grab what's on the screen.
I'm not going to take pictures of that.
Oh, I can't really, I don't think I'm really going to read anything. Maybe I'll leave them. You won't be able to read them on the picture. You can barely read them.
Yeah, I would appreciate those too.
Yeah, I would say one or two things. I can either leave them, or if you think I can read my own chicken scratching better, I can take them home, type them up, and send them to you.
I don't have any problem with that. It's to really support my own pen scratching, so.
I can't promise that I always talk and write with correct spelling, so pay attention.
We were just discussing the self-about.
Discussing what?
The school committee's self-about. I don't, I haven't completed it. Well, it doesn't take long, but...
I think that's a good one to...
I think it was already due. I wonder if she sent the governance map or my office. I sent it to myself.
So should we have a vote to adjourn?
So have I covered everything that you, Dorothy?
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Yes, all those people say aye?